Call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire emergency and alarm or sound, please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone, please turn your cell phones to silent. Thank you for your cooperation.
Mr. Richter, may I have the floor for five seconds?
Uh, sure.
The two gentlemen right there that came in first, you and your friends here, right? Very impressed. I mean, you were walking in, the pledge had just begun, and not only did you two stop down your tracks, you bow the flag, and that's impressive. I just want to let you know that I'm impressed with that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richter.
You're welcome. Additions, omissions, and changes to the agenda?
Yes, under additions, under consent agenda, we had extra class treasure report for May under new business eighteen. We have an interministerial agreement with the town of Wheatland. Also under personnel, number six is the appointment of middle and high school long-term special education teacher. Seven, eight, and nine is to allow our school psychologists to conduct CSE or chair a CSE meeting in the absence of our director. Ten is a revision to the newsletter stipend. And number eleven is the appointment of a few non-athletic positions, or eight positions of elementary chess.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda one through ten, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Communications, any correspondence?
Yes, in your board package, you see the on-roll for the third, actually marking period, seven for the high school, basically six out of ten kids are on or high on roll. And you can see how that compared to last school year. Also, you have calendar of events, so please join us at school if you're able for the various events that are going to occur between now and graduation. We have Scouter Athlete Team Awards. Our baseball, golf, softball, tennis, boys track and field, girls track and field, all earn the Scouter Athlete Team Award selected by New York State. That's it for me.
Mr. Belik, you want to start us off with points of pride?
Page eleven, Mike.
Steal it for me. Oh, I got it here, I'm sorry. Thank you. We're excited to share the results of the Spring Genesee Valley BOSI's literacy or literary contest. High school winners, Bella Pilatier, first place, Julia Wasilko, first place, Atila Bilazi, third place, Lily Clement, honorable mention.
Congratulations to the varsity golf senior Noah McCready, who was named Livingston County News Athlete of the Week. Coach Grattan has twenty-four Raiders in grades seven through twelve on the trap team roster, along with ten incredible volunteer coaches this year. We are proud to be competing for the seventh year in a row, or seventh year in the New York State High School Clay Target League. Didn't they have their?
Yeah, they had their competition on Sunday, and the kids did very, very well.
Thank you. And congratulations to the varsity tennis team, who won the Section 5 B3 championships. Raiders have won the last three out of four years of this championship. And congratulations to our top seed varsity golf team, who won the Section 5 Class D championship. Raiders have won four straight Section 5 championships.
Matthew Clary-Powell conducts an essay contest for juniors at Cal-Mum High School with students writing an essay to answer, "What Does Memorial Day Mean to Me?" Congratulations to this year's selectees. First place with a $200 prize, Ryan Murdock. Second place with $100, Colin Foote. Third place with $50 is Lily Clement.
And the class of 2028 enjoyed a two-night, three-day experience in Washington, DC. Highlights of the trip included visits to Arlington National Cemetery, Pentagon Memorial, Iwo Jima, Jefferson, Martin Luther King, and FDR memorials, the White House Smithsonian Museum of Natural History, and Smithsonian National Zoological Park. They also enjoyed a guided tour of the Capitol, complete with passes to the visitors' gallery and the House Chamber, courtesy of Congresswoman Claudia Tenney, and experienced a nighttime illuminated tour of the World War II, Korean, Lincoln, and Vietnam memorials.
We're proud to share with our district art show administrator awards. Our administrative team each selected a piece that caught their eye from the show this year's show. These selected pieces will now be displayed in the offices for the following year. Congratulations to our winners, Samantha Johnson, Mr. Malasani Superintendent, Samantha Johnson, Mr. McCardle Assistant Principal, Olivia M. Reese, Mrs. Valone, Director of Technology, Chloe Kurtz, Dr. Chanel, Principal, Chloe Kurtz, Mrs. Rogers, Director of Pupil Services, Nolan Comstock, Mr. Nardone, Business Administrator, and Maya Wilson, Mr. Gennino, Director of Facilities.
It's the first time we've been there, but it's, I think, a great tradition, will be called.
Camp Raider 2024 was a huge success. Thirty-two teams competed in an incredible day of teamwork, strategy, fun, school pride, and sun.
From the Batavia Daily News and Livingston County News, Dan Dickens received Coach of the Year for softball. Mike Reed, Coach of the Year for golf. Brian McQuillan for tennis. Other BDN and ElCN sports awards went to Lorenzo Martel, Oliver Johnson, Garrett Thompson, and Tyler Koch. Congratulations to all.
We are proud to share that two Raiders received special awards at the Genesee Valley BOSI's annual senior recognition and award ceremony. Colton Ingrick for Autotech, CTE Student of the Year. Dansville's Rally Round the Valley Auto Trades Award went to Trey Higgins in Culinary Arts and for the Josh Moore Memorial Award.
And grades K through five hit the turf at the iconic Hamilton Sports Complex for our annual Elementary Field Day. This was led by physical education teachers, Mr. Gaffney and Mrs. DePerez, and our Raiders had a blast.
Fifth graders enjoyed an amazing field trip to Rotary Sunshine Camp in Roch, New York. The perfect weather led to our Raiders having an absolute blast. They enjoyed archery, paddle boats, fishing, a huge climbing wall, zipline, hiking trails, splash pad, and team-building activities. Special thanks to our teachers for organizing such a great day and our parents that helped chaperone.
Pre-K Raiders had their annual celebration for both the AM and PM classes in the elementary auditorium. It was all smiles at the pre-K, as the pre-Kers saying, "You're a grand old flag," and more and more fun numbers on the stage in front of their family and friends. We are so proud of these incredible Raiders, the class of 2037, that they are ready for kindergarten in the fall and the amazing journey that lies ahead. Thank you for our teachers, Mrs. Hopkins and Mrs. Pukoff, and aides, Mrs. Van Allen and Mrs. Stein, for putting on such a great event.
On May 30th, our fourth grade students had the opportunity to learn about a variety of careers. Members of our community and the surrounding area volunteered to spend the afternoon presenting to our students. And thank you to our presenters, Mr. Merrick, an investigator from Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Mrs. Yacal, an executive manager and previous Cal-Mum teacher, Dr. Ferris, a local family physician, and Mr. Caleb Bersisi, a civil engineer.
And we held the Third Annual STEAM Day event, which involves science, technology, engineering, art, and math, and invited students in K through five to delve into a world of creativity, engineering, and imagination.
Our fourth and fifth grade students showcased their talents at our annual elementary spring concert. Everyone did a wonderful job.
And we have a couple recognitions to give out. Since this will be the last official board meeting for a couple of our board members, Jamie Fitch, thank you for your devotion and commitment to the student staff and community for your last three years. And Arnie Rich-Luckey, I'm not great with math, but I believe it's eighteen years.
Yep.
An appreciation for your many years of dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to the student staff and community. Okay, guests of the board, Mrs. Burns. Go to the podium, I think that's where the cameras are set up.
Save a treat, Jamie.
Um, I guess everything's going good. I haven't found any issues or problems with the bills, warrants, whatever you want to call them. Jeremy's doing a great job with everything. He's flexible with my schedule, so I don't know if you guys have any questions?
So Barb, there's three people here in this room, they made that announcement, I don't know what we do. Can we share it real quickly?
Claims auditor, internal claims auditor, I guess that's how I sign the paperwork. The state years ago made a rule that we had to, the Caladonia, or every school actually had to have somebody from the outside that doesn't work for the school come in and look at the bills, go over the invoices, purchase orders, everything that's attached, and then I approve the payment. And then I stuff the envelopes with the checks and attach all the paperwork and hand it back to Jeremy, and he mails the checks out, so.
Any questions for Barb?
Thank you. Thank you for your report.
Yes, you're welcome.
And now our Section 5 golf champions with Coach Maya Reed.
Just want to say, thanks for the continued support for our golf program. Fourth consecutive year that we've won sectionals, and you know, support of the school is huge. Relationship that we've built with the golf course allows the kids to get a lot of golf in, so that really helps with the success. And these guys put the time in, and that's really the bottom line, is they really enjoy golf. They treat it like it's a true sport, like any other, you know, sport with practice and put the time in, and they've done a pretty good job. So congratulations to these guys for our fourth consecutive sectional title. We also have Tyler Cook. He was the Class D individual champion, so it's kind of like wrestling and some of the other sports where they do individual and team, so it's a separate qualifying event, and he won Class D sectional, so congratulations to Tyler. It's the first one that we've had since I've been here as coach anyway. I don't know how far back it goes, but a great job.
Are any of these guys seniors that have got, so you've gotten four?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And Noah McCready as well, he's not here, so he's probably, he's probably working at the golf course, which is one of his more, I think, I can work on.
Are any of you used to that player?
Sure. We have Liam McCardle, eighth grade. Liam also was on the team last year and scored last year, so Liam's scores were counted for both as a seventh grader last year and as an eighth grader this year. Christian Backus, eighth grader, first year golf. He actually played through some regular season and sectional matches for us. Tyler Cook, junior, and again, like I said, Tyler's had, how many of you have you in all four, too?
Yeah.
He's had all four, too, because, I was just making sure, because you're not seniors when you said that I had to work backwards. So Tyler's been a part of all four, and he's got the individual. Josh Middleton, senior, part of all four, and then Trent Kessler, sophomore. Trent played in and out last year a little bit, and then this year he was our fifth player and scored in many of our matches, so. We do graduate out two seniors, but we have a lot of eighth and ninth and tenth graders that are kind of competing for those spots, so we should be in pretty good shape for next year.
Good job, guys. Yeah, if you guys want. Part of the process. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. And the tennis team, Mr. McQuillan and the team.
All right, so we actually, tonight, were just over at the Parry's House for our end-of-season annual team picnic, and we get from four to five thirty, so it worked out perfect coming to see you guys tonight. This team actually had nine seniors on it and nine underclassmen, so sort of set it our team picnic tonight, there was a balancing act, a little bit of having a lot of returners that had a lot of success with the sectional championship last year, and trying to balance that with the end of saying, "We want to build for the future" as well. The seniors on this team over the last four years have been a combined fifty-two and nine, including thirty and three over the last two seasons and sixteen and one this season. Four consecutive LCA Division Two championships and three sectional titles in the last four years, including these last two back-to-back. Like Mr. Reed said, in tennis, there's also individual and team success, so we've also, in Class B3, been the only team over the last two years to win an individual championship in singles or doubles. Lorenzo Martel is the two-time, where is he, back here? Two-time individual singles champion, and Oliver Johnson and Garrett Thompson, back-to-back doubles titles in Class B3. Definitely, I would say, you know, one of the most successful, if not the most successful class, you know, the class of 2024 here to come through in tennis, although interesting. And I don't know if some of you guys may know who he is, but when we were at the state qualifiers up in Brockport a couple weeks ago, there was a gentleman there who was watching actually quite a bit of Lorenzo's match, and I know Nate was there with me, too, sort of talking to him a little bit, who was on the team, because the sectional banners in the gym had on there seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty, until we ended up winning another league title in 2018, and then the success we've had over the last, you know, four years. All I would also say, since those new courts were put in, thank you Board of Education and for the support of everything they did on this team. You know, I was also coaching the varsity boys soccer team when the Board of Education here put in that stadium out there, and it was tremendous pride. I remember that season, you know, at every game we played, we said, "Hey, we're playing on, you know, the best field in Section 5, we better play like it out here." And I think these guys have taken to the same, you know, sort of attitude with what you've given us, you know, on this campus with the tennis courts and the facilities that you provide for our athletes, so thank you so much for that. The gentleman I was saying, though, he was actually said he was on, I believe, that '79 team. He's now a coach up at Nazareth, and I'm forgetting who his name, I couldn't remember who his name was, but he said he was actually a sectional champ, an individual sectional champ in '79, so I don't know if any of you guys, maybe not, but interesting, the little bit of the history when we were up there. Next year, definitely, it'll be a different season. We got some of, actually, why don't you guys go through, just say first and last name for these guys and what year you're in, so Spencer, go ahead.
Spencer Williams, I'm not sure. Eric Monique, sophomore.
Bryn Fonte, senior.
Michael Geer, senior.
Oliver Johnson, senior.
Max O'Porah, senior.
Garrett Thompson, senior.
Lorenzo Martel, senior.
Jeremiah Anderson, senior.
Matt Dallas, senior.
Yeah, so unlike Mr. Reed, we got our word cut out for our boys and the other seven that are not here that are underclassmen, we're definitely, we're going to be at it, and no doubt we'll be competitive next year, and, you know, we're going to try again to win a league title, win a sectional title, but the seniors definitely up here are going to be missed, so.
Was it Paul Wade?
Say that again.
Paul Wada?
That sounds, that sounds right.
And the internet's amazing.
He's an assistant at Nazareth, then, or a coach? Might be coach or assistant, I'm not sure, one of them up at Naz, though. So, yeah, I will find it out, because I want to know all the history back in, that those teams that they had, those three years, that they looked like they had a lot of success many, many years ago, so.
Do you guys have radar guns? Like, I'm just curious, I understand a little bit, to tell us on TV, but how, to know how fast the mile per hour serve, I'm just curious, I mean.
We may need to pick one of those up, because, speaking of, we don't have one, but these guys, some of them, in fact, this guy here, the sophomore, I was just saying tonight, hits a real, so we said, "We got to work on getting it in consistently." But you're right, some of these guys get, you know, I'll read the pros at 1200 miles an hour, so, so, yeah, yep.
Trophy? All right, this would be the time for all of you to sneak out if you want to. Mrs. Burns. We have nobody signed up in the public forum, so move on to Superintendent's report, Mr. Malasani.
Yes, so in your board package, I shared with you the results of our most recent election and budget vote. You had publicly, and do you have any questions? As you guys can see now, certain times.
Thank you. We'll move on to old business, then. Number one, adoption of the Code of Conduct. Result of the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the district-wide Code of Conduct for 2024-2025. Motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number two, annual approval of district-wide emergency response plans. Result of the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the Project SAFE School District-wide Emergency Response Plans for the 2024-2025 year per Commissioner's Regulation 155.17. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Now, for the annual approval tonight, the building levels will go back and create their building plans from the district plan. See those in a while.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. New business, there's no extra old business, sorry. No, new business, number one. Date of the annual organizational meeting. Result of the Board of Education, hold its annual organizational meeting per Board Policy Number 1620 on Tuesday, July 9th. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Transfers to reserve funds, number two, under new business. Result of the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, pre-authorize any transfers which may be necessary in connection with the fiscal year-end closing of the district books to ensure compliance with Section 1318 of the Real Property Tax Law, with a 4% limit on the fund balance. In the event that there is a budget surplus that is greater than what we were able to utilize in our appropriated fund balance, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education take action to authorize transfers to approved reserve funds, including the appropriation of fund balance and reserve contained in the voter-approved 2024-2025 budget. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number three, under new business, is approval of the bond resolution. Result of the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the bond resolution to blow for the purchase of a school bus. The bond resolution is dated June 11, 2024, of the Board of Education of the Caladonia-Munford Central School District authorizing general obligation bonds to finance the acquisition of a school bus, authorizing bond anticipation notes and completion thereof, the levy of taxes and annual installments and payment thereof, the expenditure of such sums for such purpose, and determining other matters in connection therewithin. Whereas the qualified voters of the Caladonia-Munford Central School District of New York at the annual meeting of such voters duly held on May 12, 2024, duly approved the proposition authorizing the levy of taxes to be collected in installments in the manner provided by the education law for the specific object or purpose described below, and it is listed sections one through twelve. A motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? So does this have to be a roll call vote? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. That motion carried. Number four, Athletic Code of Conduct presentation.
So annually, we review the Athletic Code of Conduct, and it's a group of teachers, administrators, myself, coaches, and we just kind of put it out there, like, what do you think, how are things going, as they can be changed. We really haven't made any significant changes since we overhauled the attendance, was probably the last one that we did, and as you know, we don't have academic policy. We felt like that if our kids are in school, our teachers do a great job, our administrators do a great job, we educate, and we don't have problems. So we felt like, instead of trying to create a policy for something we didn't need, we tackle attendance, and the rest of it falls into place. That was the last real big change we've made. We don't have any real big changes for this year. I'll go through it a little bit here. The one thing, and I'll show you, is that the state is revamping the advanced placement process, which is the process where some of the youth leaders test to play JV or varsity, in addition to the mixed competition guidelines, which is where if you have a female that wants to play a male sport or a male wants to play a female sport, they're revamping both of those guidelines. Right now is the comment period, I believe, through state ed, and that information, the changes, which is fantastic for us, but will come out like in September supposedly. So what that means is, we can't really update the Code of Conduct until that point, but once it, once it's updated, we do have to abide by it, so that would mean for like winters, so you're going to have the old rule for fall and then the new rules for winter and spring, which is always interesting. So I put in the Code of Conduct asterix that just says, "We'll update once we get that information from the state."
Actually, in your Friday backup notes, I'm going to share with you, it's called one thirty, section 135.1. It's really worthwhile reading, because I think you need to contact the Board of Regents rep that represents us, because I really think if this is approved, it's going to diminish the opportunities for female athletes in our district and throughout the state. So I'm on the state committee, I'm very, very active with respect to advocacy, and also with Section 5. What's being proposed is going to take spots away from female athletes, and male athletes will be assuming those roles. So I would urge you to be an advocate as well, to take care of our women in our, in our schools. I'll share that with you on Friday memo.
Okay, so I'll go through what I have here, and again, if you have any other questions. Okay. I turned it off. So there's what we talked about, it's reviewed each year. Good shape, again. The fourth bullet down talks about the mixed competition, and we will do what we've done in the past, we'll just change it to mirror what the state has. And that's true for the athletic placement process as well. Code of Conduct violations, so this is drugs, alcohol, tobacco, those sorts of things. I, you know, usually I just give you a one-year window backwards, so you can see 22, 23, zero. 23, 24, we had one. Unfortunately, that student athlete violated twice, so they missed, you know, don't miss significant time for that. Participation pass, so this is the attendance piece. We track attendance, if students are not in at the start of the school day, but they're in before 9:15, just for any reason, you know, life happens, they get a participation pass. And you can see there, we break it down by season. They get a certain amount per season, and if they exhaust that, then they are ineligible, they can't practice or play. So you see the numbers are bigger in the front half, nineteen by fourteen, ten by eight, and eleven by nine. That means a student athlete used more than one, so some guys, two. We didn't have anybody that was unable to become eligible, nobody exhausted their supply. We had a couple that were close. Usually when that happens, when they get to, like, they have one left, I will, I always email the parent and the student and the coach, but then I'll start including the district administration as well, just because, you know, communication, we want our way to be on the same page with what's going on. The participation reports, we prepare those each season, and again, it's like a broken record, but as you get a, and now so it's not so much like a pattern in terms of, oh, we're going down, we're going down. Now it's just a matter of what happens when you get a different number of. Now it's just a matter of what happens when you get a different number of males or females. So when you have a class that has nineteen boys and thirty-five girls, you see the impact in your male sports. I mean, it's just, it's the way it is, when you have fewer people to pick from, fewer people to play sports, you're going to have lower numbers in in some of those sports. And again, we have been using the mod A varsity model where needed, and we also continue the merger discussions to keep programs alive. I think we've heard a lot from our coaches in the past couple of years, how they struggle with, you know, we we love the idea of having the Cal-Mon based team, but they really struggle with small numbers in the program, not just because it can, hard time to be competitive, but because they're not teaching them life lessons that athletics teach. So if you have eleven kids on a team, or you have to play eleven kids, and you have fourteen kids on the team, and two kids are not breaking the rules, but just not doing what you want, like, they kind of know, like, what are you going to do, bench two of them? Now you, now you don't have a team, and you're punishing the rest of the kids. So our coaches have really struggled with that the past couple of years, with, you know, how do we use, you know, we're education-based athletics, they felt like they were having to choose between getting a team on the field and teaching the life lessons that athletics can teach. So we had a lot of discussions around that, and trying to figure out what we can do to have adequate numbers on the field or court. Here's the actual rates, again, with the three-year, three years of look back, you see some bumps, some some bump up, some bump down. You know, tennis and golf have had some success, so those, maybe bump those numbers up in the spring a little bit. If teams struggle a little bit, those numbers can bump down. When you have a small amount of boys, if you get a lot of them to participate, you might have a higher percentage. On the other hand, if you have a small amount of boys, that boys team that maybe they would join might not be successful, and then, you know, it gets harder for them to want to play, and then those numbers drop. So there's a lot of variables in there. If you looked at the averages across time, you know, they even out pretty much. There's a low, low girls for this past winter, and, you know, we we haven't had any girls participating in wrestling the past couple of years, sometimes those bump the numbers up. We had some low rate, we had some low numbers in cheerleading this past year, we only had varsity and mod modified. So sometimes those things influence the numbers as well. Those are hyperlinked, too, so if you guys have the report on your computer, you could hit that, and you can see the actual breakdown by by spore. Do you guys, I'll stop there for a second, does anybody have any questions about these numbers or anything so far on this? Okay, keep going. Dual participation, so I got to be honest, our coaches don't really love this, there's a couple that do, because it keeps their program alive, but other coaches don't, because they feel that it pulls the kid away from their primary sport, even if they declare a primary and they have a secondary. Again, we place a high emphasis on dedication, our our coaches are dedicated, they put the time in, they want the student athletes to match that dedication, and it gets tough when, you know, it gets tough if you're having a team where there's playing time involved in one kid's at practice and the other kid's at their other sport, like, you know, what do you do? So we can see where it's valuable for some schools that otherwise might not have programs, but for for us, where we have kids that are crisscrossing. The other part is, and a lot of it actually gets filtered out by myself, I meet with the kids prior, and I show them what a practice schedule would look like, and they kind of look at me like, well, wait a minute, I have to go to practices for both teams? And I'm like, yes, so I think they come in kind of like with that summer club kind of thought process, like, oh, well, I play soccer on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and basketball on Mondays and Wednesdays, like, that's what I want to do for school. And our coach is like, no, we're not two-day-a-week teams, like, we're five days a week, we're grinding, we're getting after it, so we need you there all the time. And when they start to look at that, when I lay out those practice schedules for them, and they see, like, oh, I'd have to go from three to five to baseball, and then five to five forty-five for golf or something, like, oh. So those kind of take care of themselves, but like I said, our our coaches are not huge fans of it for the most part, just because they want to work with their student athletes and have the best student athlete and program they can. Of those four, are they all four different ones, or is there somebody that did it more than one season? Um, game of the year, cross country, and volleyball, they're all different. Okay. Those are all different. In the past, we have had maybe one that that did more than one, but those are tough. There's some that lend itself naturally, so JV basketball indoor track, like, okay, so primary was basketball, she was at all basketball pretty much, there wasn't much conflict with indoor track in either practices, most of the meets for indoor track were on Saturdays, we don't generally practice or play on Saturday, so sometimes it does work out okay, you know, as as that ethic progresses to varsity basketball, we'll have to see, I mean, that playing time's a little more competitive at the varsity level. So, you know, we'll just have to see, it's really a case-by-case basis. Scholar-athlete, again, when we look at our data, why don't we have an academic policy? Well, because we have great success. We have a lot of our students who are student, are scholar-athletes, and that's, you know, it's pretty hard to do, you have to manage your time, our schedule's tough, we have that block scheduling, things come with the kids fast, so they do a great job. And we will be honored as a school of excellence, and that's the second level. The highest level is every single team has to get it, we miss by, you know, every year we seem to have one, one or two teams, but it's not a bad thing. It means that our coaches are going out and they're getting kids that maybe struggle here and there, and they're playing sports, so like, that sometimes happens, so, you know, it's a nice award that there's, it's out there, but, you know, we also love that our coaches go out and get those kids that might struggle, because it keeps them interested in school, even if they're not getting a ninety average or something like that, so it's a, it's a good thing, we have, you know, good success on both ends. Now, the good news, I saved this one from the end, you've already recognized us, but again, tennis won the sectionals, there's a nice picture of the tennis team that was out there on social media, and then there's the golf team. That's all I have for you this evening, if you have any questions, I can answer them. Any questions for Mr. Reed? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number five, under new business is approval of the Athletic Code of Conduct, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the Athletic Code of Conduct for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number six, under new business, stars of tomorrow gala rates, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the stars of tomorrow gala rates for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year as follows, twenty-five dollars per day for rehearsal, fifty dollars per day for performances. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
We'll go, motion by Arnie, second by John, any discussion?
Is it twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-three, twenty-two.
Okay, so it's the current school year.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number seven, school bus intermunicipal cooperative agreement, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve intermunicipal cooperative agreement with the York Central School District regarding the transportation of students in the event of a driver or bus shortage for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year per attached resolution. Motion, please.
Make it.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? That motion carried, and we have the same agreement with the Leroy Central School District, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve intermunicipal cooperative agreements with the Leroy Central School District regarding the transportation of students in the event of a driver or bus shortage for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year per attached resolution. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions?
The only thing that we're trying to work on, actually, within our boces, is that we all have this agreement, so that we can tap into each other's services throughout the year, so we're trying to get that approved here in the next couple of years, for anybody who tends to have boces.
Especially when a battery bus dies in the middle of the country.
So true.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number nine, adoption of textbooks, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the textbook committee, approved the adoption of the recommended textbooks, Economics by Gary Clayton, published in two thousand and twenty-four, and The Principles of Economics, tenth edition, by Gregory Manquie, published in two thousand and twenty-four. Motion, please.
Yep.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number ten, adoption of merged athletic team nickname, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, adopt rivals as the official nickname for all merged sports teams with the Leroy Central School District. Motion, please.
Yep.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Can I do them both?
You can.
Eleven and twelve, we have a merged cross-country team and a merged varsity boys soccer team, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Shared Services Committee, approved the merged cross-country program and varsity boys soccer team with the Leroy Central School District upon LCAA and section five approval. The Board authorized the superintendent to fix his signature to a three-year contract. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second.
A second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number thirteen, approval of the professional development plan for two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-five, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the professional development plan for two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-five for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number fourteen, approval of extracurricular code of conduct, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the extracurricular code of conduct for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. Motion, please.
Yep.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number fifteen, approval of special education district plan, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the special education district plan for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. Motion, please.
Make it.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number sixteen, approval of school counseling program plan, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the school counseling program plan for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number seventeen, acceptance of bid, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the cleaning services bid from JV Cleaning Services for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Number eighteen, intermunicipal cooperative agreement, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved intermunicipal cooperative agreement with the town of Weetland regarding the use of the library facility for tutoring, per attached resolution. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second.
I'll make it. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Just says we got to do it for you, for real, instead of, or handshake.
Do we have that agreement with Caladonia as well?
No.
Should we pursue that?
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Executive session, resolved at the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at six forty-five PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and matters leading to the appointment, and matters leading to the potential discipline of a particular person or persons. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second.
Second.